We will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller?
Here.
Ettinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Okay, tonight we'll have our invocation by Pastor Craig Miles from Real Life Ministries.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I want to lift up this meeting to you and to the men and the women on this council that serve our community in this way. Lord, I'm sure that each of them is busy with occupations and family and life, and yet they choose to serve our community in this way and just with their expertise and with their time. Lord, I lift up the items that are on the agenda this evening, items that have the potential to impact many in our community. And so, God, I pray for a measure of wisdom for the men and the women on this council as they seek solutions and right decisions. God, I want to pray a blessing upon each one of their lives as well as the lives of the people who are impacted by the decisions that are made tonight. Lord, we lift up the proceedings, just the men and the women here making the decisions as well as those presenting and those affected, and we pray these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen. Glad to have Steve back to lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get down to business here. Any amendments to the agenda? I don't believe there are. We will move on to...Chief White has a presentation on the trespass enforcement program.
Well, good evening, Mayor Council. Happy St. Patty's Day. The purpose of me being here tonight is just to outline a new program that the police department is instituting in partnership with our property owners from the city. First and foremost, I want to point out that this program really doesn't involve the creation of any new ordinance or laws. Really, it's just a strengthening of our partnership between us and the business community and other property owners throughout the city. I'm going the wrong way. So here's what we see frequently with property owners. The police department frequently gets complaints, sometimes when people are actively trespassing during regular business hours, but oftentimes it occurs after hours. A business owner will call us or send us an email or what have you and complain about the people who are...
Just for definition, define what a trespass is.
It's someone who is unlawfully on real property. So you're a business owner, it could be someone who's hanging out next to your...on your property but next to your building after hours. It could be someone who's...maybe you're a snowbird and you've gone to Arizona for the winter and you've participated in this program and you have somebody in your backyard or something of that nature. Typically, though, the program that we're talking about is usually for real property owners, business owners, after hours. So what happens is the police department gets emails or telephone calls or what have you, and they're complaining that there was somebody on their property overnight, and they know this by the trash that was left behind, the graffiti was left behind, maybe the theft or vandalism or burglary that had taken place or something of that nature. Now, sometimes law enforcement can drive through our city and we see people in a back lot, but it's unclear to us whether or not the people are lawfully there or not, and if we choose to stop and contact them because we have time or what have you, then oftentimes it's difficult to figure out who the property owner is, and then we have to seek them out and see if they will assist in prosecution before we can take any sort of enforcement action. That takes quite a bit of time. An easy way to facilitate the interaction between the property owner and the police department is for business owners to do two things. Number one, they sign up. They can go to cdaid.org and click on the Community Resource Center, and they complete this trespass enforcement program letter. Now, there's two ways to do it. They can have it notarized by someone out in the community to verify that they are, in fact, the property owner and the other person filling out the form. That way, you don't have, say, Lee White filling out the form on behalf of Dan Gookin or something like that. It's legitimate. Or they can bring the form in person to the police department, and we check their ID and make sure that they are, in fact, the property owner. And the second thing we ask them to do is to post some no trespassing signs. Let me back up one side there. Post some no trespassing signs. So after hours, when the police officers are driving through the city, the businesses that are participating in the program, they'll know which ones they are. If they see somebody who's unlawfully on the property, they stop and talk with them, and then they can take enforcement action. Sometimes it's just running them off. It's just saying, "Look, you're not supposed to be here. The property owner has the property posted. We want you to leave. The property owner has given us permission to act on their behalf, and so we're requesting you leave. If not, then we can take further action." Sometimes if it's someone who's been trespassed from multiple properties in the past or some place has been burglarized or they've had damage or what have you, then the officers have the option, of course, of issuing a citation or making an in custody arrest based on the circumstances. A copy of the form, you see there on the screen in front of you, and I've given you each a copy so you can see it because it's really, really hard to read on that screen. Once the police department receives the notarized or in-person copy of this trespass enforcement request form, the form is valid for one year. The department members have authorization to take enforcement action without the homeowner present or the business owner present. And the people who are participating in the program, they can also trespass someone without calling the police. For instance, during regular business hours, I know that Mr. Hammond is a frequenter of my business, and I don't want him to come anymore. So I tell him he's no longer...
Understood.
I would never do that, sir. But if I chose to, I would tell him that he's no longer welcome on the property, and I would write down some information that's listed on the form, his name and his date of birth and the time and date of trespass, and then we give that to the police officers next time we see them, or we can ask the police officers to come and they would do the trespass information for the business owner. All that information is good for one year. It's also entered into the databases that dispatch and the officers and the county officers have access to under both the business location name and also under the individual's name. So it would show that Lee White has been trespassed from this property X, for instance, for a period of one year. Or if we are the officers where to go by a business, they could see a list of the individuals who have been trespassed from that business. So really, in summary, it's just a good way for business owners or real property owners to have better communication with the police department, keep people who they do not want on the property, who are not authorized to be there, off their property, and it gives us a little bit of enforcement tool to keep our cities a little bit more crime-free, hopefully. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions for Chief White. What?
Excuse me. Chief, would this be something people would put hours on it? I'm closed from 10:00 at night till 8:00 in the morning?
You can. Typically, though, all you really need to do is just post a sign, and it's mostly clear to people that, you know, at 2:00 in the morning, if you're, say, a legal office or something like that, everyone knows that the legal offices aren't open at 2:00 in the morning, and so when you see people out there doing something that they probably shouldn't be doing at 2:00 in the morning, then we have the ability to take enforcement action. There's no requirement to post hours on the sign. It's just during hours when the business is not usually open for regular business. There's...and I'm going to get glossed over this a little bit too quickly. This can be done for just about any real piece of property. So it can be a business owner. If, like I said, if I'm a snowbird and I leave for the winter, I can sign up with this program with the police department, and then we see someone who's, say, camping out in my front yard, then the police officers have the ability to immediately go by and take enforcement action without having to track me down in Arizona, which is oftentimes problematic, right? It's oftentimes a little bit difficult. We have to check with all the neighbors and see if any of them have a cellphone number or contact information for the business owner or the property owner and that sort of thing. So it's just another tool that we can use to make our jobs a little bit easier and also increase that level of communication with the community. Programs of this type, oftentimes what we'll see is we'll have a number of businesses sign up. Let's say on Sherman Avenue, let's say we have two or three businesses that sign up. What they're going to see very quickly is that those businesses don't have the litter problems, they don't have the graffiti problems, they don't have the theft and burglary problems that the other businesses have because the police officers are going by frequently and shooting the people off the property, or they're arresting them if they remain there. And so they go to someplace else. And so generally speaking, other businesses then sign up because they don't want the influx of other people. You know what I mean? We're not just displacing people. We're making it clear that if a business is posted, then you cannot be there during non-business hours.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief White, is this a requirement, though, to...I mean, is trespassing legal if you don't do this? Is that what I'm reading into this?
No.
Okay. So...
Maybe I should expand on that a little bit. If you post the signs, our business owner is saying that they do not want people there unauthorized after hours. And look, if I'm going to have Person X come to my business after hours and do some work, usually they know me and my contact information, right? Whereas if we contact someone who's generally just loitering, they don't have any information or legitimate reason to be there.
So, but, I mean, you don't need to have one of these filled out. If you have a business and someone's trespassing or someone's in, you know, the parking lot, you can call the police and say, "Suspicious guy is in my parking lot."
Yes.
You'll go and get rid of him, right?
Yes, but typically you won't because you're home sleeping at 2:00 in the morning when the people are trespassing, and they're writing their graffiti on your back walls or dropping the syringes or what have you back there.
But that's still, I mean, and so do you need one of these to put up a no trespassing sign?
No, you do not. No, this is just...it helps things quite a bit. There's been frequent times when at 2:00 in the morning, we go to Business X, and we have a really hard time getting a hold of the business owner. The numbers to the alarm company are out of date or what have you. People don't answer their phones because they're sleeping through them, or they're out on vacation or, you know what I mean? There's a number of issues that sometimes make that problematic. This just facilitates the process.
I just wanted to make it clear so people don't understand that this, you know, now you have to fill this out if you want the police to come to your place. I mean, that's not what we're saying here at all. We're saying this is just helps you guys to do your job. Does this need to be notarized, then? You said something about being notarized.
If they're not dropping it off in person, we requested it be notarized. That way, we're sure that the person who's filling it out is legitimate. It's not just me playing practical jokes on every member of the council and their businesses.
Darn. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Steve? Chief White, was this something your department did down in Arizona?
Yes, sir. It's not just that department. There's a bunch of departments across the U.S. that do this sort of thing.
Okay.
And it works great. It's actually a really good enforcement tool for the police officers. They're driving through our fair streets at, you know, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, and they see a gathering or individual in the back lot of a building. You know, it allows us to stop and talk with that person and chat with them and sometimes take enforcement action. I think it deters criminal behavior. I'm less likely to go to the back of your business, say, if I know that you've posted it and that people generally aren't supposed to be there.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great idea. Was this something that you planned on bringing forth, you know, months ago, or was there something that triggered you bringing it forth now? Is there a frequency of these types of calls or...
There's two things. Actually, when I was driving here from Arizona, I think Sergeant Wood called me when I was in the middle of Utah someplace, and we started discussing it, and I talked to her at that time about this program. And so when I got here, it was something that's been in the works. Lieutenant Lee Brainard has worked fantastically with Wes Somerton and the members of our prosecutor staff to make sure that everything was on the up and up and the program would work here effectively. It just took a while to get everything the way it is right now.
Dialed in. Okay, great. Thanks, Chief.
Ron, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any other questions?
Actually, just he keeps mentioning, Chief keeps mentioning Arizona because you're from Arizona. Where's Arizona in your bracket?
If I say anything, I'm probably going to jinx it, so I...
All right. Withdraw the question.
Thank you, Chief. We will go on to our audit of fiscal year 2013, 2014. We have Scott Hoover from Magnuson McQ with us here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Oh, not starting with questions first, that's for sure. So we finished the audit for the fiscal year ended 9/30/14, issued our report dated early March. And as you all know, the financial statements audit is required each year under state statutes. It's also required under OMB circular A133. Anytime the city receives and expends over $500,000 in federal funding, that triggers an audit as well, and that's pretty much every year. And the primary purpose of the audit, of course, is to make sure that the financial statements are fairly presented. So we come in, we spend probably well over 250 hours with a team of three, four people over the course of about a month, and we test transactions, we pull samples, we gather enough evidence, and we perform our audit in accordance with the professional standards that we have to adhere to in order to be able to form an opinion on the financial statements. And so that's really what it all comes down to, is having a set of financial statements that the readers, the users can rely on and know that we have issued an opinion that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement and that the financial statements are also presented in accordance with GAAP so that they can compare, you know, like a lender, for example, compare one city to another. So they're all...so the disclosures, the numbers are presented in accordance with GAAP and governmental accounting standards as well. And I'll just jump right into the...there's three different audit reports within your financial package. I don't know if you have the bound copy of the financials in front of you, but on pages one and two is the primary report. It's the independent auditor's report on the financial statements. And that is the report, again, on the numbers, the presentation, the disclosure, and that's where we actually issue our opinion. And so I'm happy to say that we have, again, an unqualified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion, that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. On pages 92 and 93 of the bound copy of the financials is the report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with governmental auditing standards. It's a mouthful. We just call it the report on internal controls or the Yellow Book Report. And this report is required under governmental auditing standards. And what we do with this report is when we're planning and performing our financial statement audit, we're required to go in each year, even though we've been auditing the city for many years, each year we have to go in and update our understanding of the key internal controls that we identify over financial reporting. And we don't test controls. We're not issuing an opinion on the internal controls, but we gather and document our understanding and then...so that we can perform our audit. And if along the way we find any...the wording is a significant deficiency in internal control or worse, a material weakness in financial reporting, any gaps or weaknesses, if you will, in internal control that rise to that level, we would bring that to your attention in this report. It's also often called a finding, and I'm happy to say that we did not have identifying any...we did not have any findings in this report. So it's another clean report. And then the third and final report is on pages 94 and 95, and that is the single audit report. So that...we go through a calculation. The city gets federal funding for several different programs. We go through a calculation to determine what is a major program, and it's typically the largest dollar federal programs. This year, I believe it was the wastewater treatment plan expansion funding loans passed through the state of Idaho from, I believe, the EQ. And so once we identify which major programs we're auditing, then we determine what the federal compliance requirements are with that, and we audit those and make sure that the city has complied with those compliance requirements. So that report as well, we have an unqualified opinion. So three clean opinions, and that's what you want. It's...can't do any better than that. I thought I'd touch briefly on just a few of the financial highlights I pulled from... Sure.
Do I have a question, Mr. Mayor? Unqualified opinion sounds really long. Can you explain that?
Us auditors have a tendency to...we...that's just the wording they use. If we qualified our opinion, like the standard is, an unqualified opinion means it's clean. We didn't have to qualify our report. So it's kind of confusing, but that's why we just say it's a clean opinion.
So it's not you that is unqualified?
No.
Right?
No.
Okay, gotcha.
So, George Troy and maybe perhaps Bonnie wrote the MDNA this year. The MDNA stands for Management's Discussion and Analysis, and that's in the front of the report before you get to the financial statements. And just a few quick highlights here. We saw the completion of the McQun project in 2014. There was also about $5.5 million from LCDC funding that the city booked as donated capital assets during the year, and so that helped. That was in addition to the fund balance this year. Also saw total debt increasing by about $6.4 million, again, due to the wastewater treatment facility expansion and upgrades. And then total governmental funds balance was $13.9 million, which was an increase over the prior year of $1.7 million. And then always like to focus a little bit on fund balance and why it's important. And it's important because the revenue streams of the city aren't consistent month to month, and the best example of that is property taxes received primarily, the majority of them are received in July and January. So that fund balance helps carry you guys over. It also protects the city from any unnecessary borrowing, provides prudent resources to meet any unexpected emergencies such as a recession, a cut in funding, federal and state funding would help bridge that gap, and then also helps ensure credit rating that would qualify the city for lower interest rates in the case that it does need to go out and borrow some money. And just overall helps ensure some financial stability. I'm sure you guys know all this. The GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that at a minimum that governments maintain an unassigned fund balance in their general fund of no less than 5% to 15% of general, regular general fund operating revenues. Or another way to look at it, no less than one to two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. So I have a couple graphs here to show you. This is a five-year trend of the general fund, unassigned fund balance. There's no restrictions with that as a percent of revenues. And so you can see the GFPA recommends 5% to 15% on the low end, and you can see that the city's done a really good job of maintaining...in 2014, it's got 20% of its general fund revenues.
Scott, does the GFPA recommend a maximum?
No, not that I'm aware of. They just show a minimum.
Steve? Scott, what would you mean by no restrictions?
Unassigned fund balance, you know, there's...it means that there's no restrictions tied to that, to your general fund unassigned balance, so that money is free to spend on whatever you see fit.
Thank you.
So all in all, looking at it as a fund balance as a percent of revenues, that's a healthy fund balance, at least according to the GFPA. Again, I'll just point out with these graphs that this is a snapshot in time as of 9/30/14. Fund balance can change by the day, by the week, depending on...
Isn't this year-end?
Yes, this is as of a snapshot as of 9/30/14 for the year-end. Here's another way of looking at it. General fund unrestricted, unassigned fund balance, the number of days expenditures. So you have the city's been trending here the last five years, between 57 all the way to 69, 69 days of expenditures in 2014. So that's...and then the GFPA, they recommend between 30 and 60, so you guys are just north of that, which is good. Moving into the business-type funds, just have a couple graphs on the business fund, on your two largest enterprise funds. The water fund here, this is just a five-year comparison of operating revenues to operating expenses. And as I was looking at this today, this is, I believe, we pulled this out of the MDNA, but it looks kind of funny because it looks bad, like revenues are each year, operating revenues in the water fund are less than expenses, and oh, no. But really, the short...the difference in that is primarily cap fees, which are not...they're classified as non-operating in the financial statements, so you're not seeing the, you know, cap fees there. But is this just to show a slight increase both in revenues and expenses each year here in the water fund? And then same graph for wastewater fund here, operating revenues and expenses. Not sure what was going on in 2011 and '12 where expenses were so much higher, but you can see here that, again, you see an increasing trend in both, well, in revenues. Again, same thing there, cap fees are not in operating revenues, and so that's why it looks the way it does.
So I looked at it the same way. Why are not...why cap fees aren't in there? Why would I look at this this way? You know, it confuses me. I'm going, wait a minute.
Yeah.
We're spending more than we're getting.
Well, yeah, it's probably not the best choice of graph. Cap fees, help me out, Troy, are non-operating.
Correct. So...
Is that an unqualified...sorry. Kidding.
So we wanted to compare operating revenues to show that without those capitalization fees, we would not be able to carry on those utilities. So we could have added those back in in that graph, or maybe add a different color to that revenue stream to show you where we're getting the money to make up that difference. But it's here to confirm for you as electives why it is that we need growth paying for those growth areas, especially in this very expensive process of cleaning up wastewater.
Scott, are capital expenditures in expenses?
In the governmental funds, yes. So you have really two sets of financial statements in a governmental financial statement. You have the governmental funds, which focus on the current use of resources. So, for example, like a debt, a loan payment, interest expense, that capital expenditures are shown in the governmental funds as expenditures. And then when you go to the government-wide financial statements, you see that's where we basically undo that through a GASB, through a journal entry and present, remove them from capital outlay, from expenditures, and present them in fixed assets as capital assets and depreciate them.
And borrowing considered to be a revenue?
Yes, it would in the governmental funds, yes.
So it's a little backwards from...
Yeah, the two primary differences between the governmental funds financial statements and the government-wide financial statements are debt is...debt proceeds are shown as income and debt repayments are shown as expenses in the governmental funds, and same thing with capital expenditures. They're shown as expenditures in the governmental funds, and then all of those are put on the balance sheet in the government-wide funds. And their financial statements here have a...they basically bridge the gap between the two financial...between the two different sets of financial statements. We have a reconciliation in there that shows kind of how are you getting from governmental funds financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. Confusing?
Mr. Mayor, so Scott, before the meeting, I was pointing this out to you from the financial report, and this is wastewater and water, and it shows that the revenues are way up above expenses on this chart, but is that because this chart does include the capital?
And what page is that?
Page nine.
I thought we've always been proud of our utilities because we pay for our work and we have money in the bank.
Yeah, they do. You transfer money out there to fund the shortfall, I believe. Yes, revenue...this must be total revenues.
That includes the capital fees and all that stuff.
Total revenues to total expenses.
Okay.
Looks better.
Yeah, this looks better, but it's still kind of worrisome because you see that, you know, that obviously we're spending more than we're taking in, which is troubling to me.
At 11 and 12, there must be capital projects in 11 and 12. Troy, do you know if that was the case in 11 and 12 for the expenditures and wastewater? Were there capital projects?
Absolutely correct.
Yeah, and the funds must have come in prior to those years to pay for those capital projects.
And that would have been loans as well and depreciation.
Okay.
Any other questions? Questions for Scott? He's got all your questions out.
Yeah, I met with Scott before the meeting and told him that I appreciated the report and the job you did, and thank you for your time.
And my compliments also to Troy and Bonnie and their team. It's a pretty smooth audit, and like I said, you know, it's not easy. We spend 250 hours, you know, at least going through your books and asking questions, and so it's quite a process, and we, you know, just we appreciate the relationship and their help in making it an easy audit and clean audit.
Kiki may have a question for you.
Just one thing. Can you walk me...I'm just thinking about the...how this, the semantics of this would work for... of this would work for people in a month long through the audit. So according to this, the procedures and the government processes that you follow, is all of the information that you audit funneled through, say Troy and Bonnie? Or do you have, is the internal controls where it's covered that you would talk to other individuals throughout these departments?
Most of the, like the trial balance, you know, the financial information is, comes from Bonnie. But we spend quite a bit of time walking through the different, you know, we spend time with their entire department asking questions. We spend time with the human resources or H R and payroll. And we, we interview them. We are, we pretty much talk to everybody and, because each person has a different role. For example, you know, accounts payable and payroll. And so we, we, we do a pretty good job of talking to everybody and we're essentially auditing everybody's work.
Great.
So it's not just dealing solely with Bonnie.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
We will move to the consent calendar. Who's going to take the duties?
I.
Oh, you got it.
I.
I think I was going to see if my voice was going to make it through it because this looks like a long one. But I would make a motion that we approve the council minutes for March 3rd, approve the bills as submitted, setting a general services and public works committee meeting for March 23rd. Approval of the cemetery lot purchases, lots 385 through 386, block H. Enforced cemetery from Bill and Dolores Henderson as recommended by the city clerk. Approval of a mobile food confection permit for King of Tacos for April 12th in the lower city hall parking lot as recommended by the city clerk. Approval of grant easement for water main and appurtenances from Riverstone West Apartments Three LLC, Riverstone Place LLC and Hudson Park LLC as recommended by the water superintendent. And setting of a public hearings, April 7th, 2015, to hear public comments regarding the community development block grant plan, year 2015 annual action plan. April 7th, 2015, the final assessment role of L I D 151, Front Avenue Improvement Project. April 21st, 2015, A dash one dash 15, proposed annexation from County Industrial to City C seven of the City of Coeur d'Alene Burlington Northern Railroad property. May 5th, 2015, C C dash one dash 15, a proposed zone change from R 12 to C 17 by Miller Development, 3113 North Government Way, recommended by the city clerk. Declaration of sole source procurement of Allen Brady Electrical Equipment and Software for wellhouses due to its specific compatibility of the equipment and computer software pursuant to I C 67 dash 20, 28082A2 as recommended by Public Works. And Resolution 15 dash 009, approval of second supplement to real estate purchase and sales agreement with B and S F Railway Company extending the closing date to May 28th of 2015.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Renata.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Motion carried. We move on to announcements. Woody, you have an announcement?
I have an announcement. I want to thank Troy and Bonnie for the great year on this financial thing, even though there's some weird words in there and some charts that look a little backwards. You guys do a great job. I always feel real comfortable when people talk about our money. You are very conservative and you explain it really well. And then when we get in trouble, you're able to take care of it. So I appreciate the efforts of you and your staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone else have an announcement?
Okay. I have some appointments to committees. We'd like to appoint John Ingalls, Mike Dodge, Jeff Lemon and Rich McKernan to the Design Review Commission. And I would like to appoint Samantha Tuscan to the Child Care Commission.
Don't move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Onto other business and Troy is very anxious to get up to the podium and give his report on Council Bill 15 dash 1003, the 2015 Public Safety Geo Bond Election.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And thank you for those kind words. It's a great community in which to work and yes, we spend time looking at those numbers. Speaking of numbers, we bring to you tonight the official ballot language for the upcoming general obligation bond. We have bond counsel in the room with us tonight that's helped us with these words. We are proposing with your approval to go to our voters in May for a $6 million general obligation bond. The election date is May 19th. As we look into our crystal ball and we speak to experts, we're proposing an annual true interest cost of less than 2%. That's a fun number when you're having to pay interest. And part of that is because of the audit that you just looked at and the fact that we represent a city that does take care of its numbers and does have cash to come up and pay those bills when they are presented. I'd like to update you on a modification since you initially looked at our general obligation bond proposal. In fact, we have modified it such that there are no police vehicles in this particular $6 million. So I've used one acronym in here, the S C B A. That's in the fire department. That's a self-contained breathing apparatus. So you have looked at these excluding the cars that we had in the patrol and for detectives in our police department. They're not our frontline cars, but we have pulled them out. We have worked with the legal team at the city. We have worked with the legal bond counsel. And currently, according to the way in which we read the state code, police vehicles are not allowed. In fact, we believe that we have such an opportunity here that our very own administrator has used his connections in Boise. And we are proposing to have it modified so that in the code at the state of Idaho, you can acquire police equipment. Right now, the legislation leans, leads, leans, leads towards fire. So we have made a couple proposals. The contact person for this particular Senate bill is Jim Hammond. I have it right here in print. And so that is being done as we speak as well. So what we did with the dollars that were appropriated for those was we gave ourselves a contingency on the building and we have proposed to increase the camera network more than what you looked at last time. Now, your approval tonight gives us authority to go up to $6 million. That does not mean we have to go up to $6 million. However, interest rates are very attractive. These are all areas in which we desperately need to have these pieces of equipment acquired. We need that large building to store equipment. We're going to put people out in the building that we have on here as well. So that's the $6 million expenditure on one sheet of paper with one modification since you looked at it last. That is, other than good interest rates and when we're going to vote and the language that was done, that's what we are sharing with you tonight.
Troy, if you could share with us the timing of going through the bond process as well as the purchases, saying that it is approved by, by the voters, what is the process then of the time from its approval to the time of making all of those purchases?
It'll be stretched out. If we ordered, say that ladder truck today, it could be up to a year before we'd actually see it. So we will work with our financer to figure out what the best way is to bring the money in. We've got a bank that might work with us as well, where we could actually borrow the money. They would actually use the voter-approved general obligation bond as a return. Number of the smaller vehicles we can get done and, you know, the $500,000 storage facility, we would start building that right away. So I would expect within about 15, 16 months, we would have spent through those dollars.
And the funds flow in at what, when do they flow in? All at once?
We can, we would try to stagger it so as to keep our interest costs down, not borrow it all upfront if we don't need it. And we can work with a financer to help us with that. So that we don't borrow, say, 1.4 million dollars on day one that we don't need until later.
So it can be somewhat like a line of credit?
Somewhat like a line of credit, absolutely. Yep. And we'll look at that closely as we do that.
Okay. Questions? Steve.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So Troy, did I hear you correctly or correct me if I did not? Are you saying that if Mr. Hammond's proposed legislation passes this year, that there's the possibility that some police equipment could be included in these dollars? We could, you could come back and modify that or, or no?
I'm not, I'm not thinking that we could get it all done perfectly to go to the voters. So what we've chosen to do is back off that equipment and maybe look at a different way in which to do those vehicles. You, you as a council have gotten comfortable with the way in which we've done that leasing for short terms. And this type of equipment could be leased if we wanted to go that way. So we could do an emergency act on that and we've contemplated it so that we could get it in there. But you need to take action so that we can get this on the ballot right now.
Sure.
So that's the timeline we're running up against. But great question. We believe that public safety is police and fire. You will quickly be looking at an acquisition of a new police vehicle. It's an SUV, just to give you a little number. The vehicle's about 33,000. When we equip it, it's over $50,000 for one piece of equipment that's on the road that's a mobile office. So we think the legislation is very dated in not capturing those types of major assets.
Thank you. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, on the, on this type of a bond, isn't there a 10-year life thing somewhere? Why does that keep jumping in my head?
Yes, we like to put assets in here that will last well over 10 years. It's the best way to match the funding to the life of the asset. And I think our legislators have done a good job of recognizing that you're not going to put mopeds in here or something like that, so.
And then we talked about what it was going to cost us.
Yes.
And I saw some numbers and I think it's been costing us $28 a month over the last bond. So this will, there'll be no break in it. It just, it's a continuation or, and a re, it's a re-up of 6 million bucks, right?
Yes, it is a renewal of.
And for less money.
Less money. At a lower interest rate. And that number is per year.
Per year, okay.
For a typical home with a homeowner's exemption.
Okay.
So it is going down about $5.20 per year.
Per year.
For a classic residential homeowner with a median, that's the variable in all this. And that's just this portion of the total levy raise.
So less than a dollar a month? No, $2 a month.
$2.
Yeah, there you go. Two bucks a month.
It's math.
Okay. Well, I have a low little house, you know.
Thank God. I wish I had a little house.
Me and Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, I think what we're taking, taking or giving back, I think the school district took, so it's a wash. So I have a question now. First of all, good, good thing on the SUVs. I know I've, I've been doing ride-alongs and I, a couple of those guys are big and they like the SUVs. So I, I hope that's a good move. But on this bond, so we're telling the public that this is what we're purchasing. So this is what we're purchasing. It's not like we can change our minds after this, not that we would want to, but just to show the public, this is what we're buying.
You are correct, sir. That's what we did 10 years ago. We can show them what we did and that we stayed on budget.
Perfect. If we, if we go out and we have all these items and we buy them and we find out that fire trucks are on sale for some reason and the total comes out to be less than $6 million, what happens then? I mean, we're still borrowing the $6 million, but what hap, no, we're not. What happens?
No, your finance director will not allow this to go over that number as we tighten this all down and get the bids on what that 110-foot ladder on that truck costs. We will probably have numbers in here that aren't going to be perfect because everything is moving. But we do not have to go to $6 million. We're asking the voters authority to. If we come in less, that'll be the savings that our constituents see.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions for Troy? Ron.
Troy, up there it says fireboat replacement. Tell me about it. I thought we had a fireboat.
You do have a fireboat. That's why we put replacement up there. This is a much greater fireboat that is custom-built for the fire department. The one that we've been working on for a number of years, in the street shop especially, was a $0 given to us fireboat that we have been spending a great amount of effort to make sailable and make it ready for the water. And it is probably going to be like the classic boat saying goes, your happiest days of owning a boat are when you buy it and when you get rid of it. So we're looking for the second happiest day with the existing one.
Ron, this new boat will actually pull two water skiers.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Troy? Thank you. I guess we were looking for a motion.
Don't move. Second.
Is that we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion on that?
Can we do that legally?
It's just kind of a slam dunk. So Renata, would you like, would you like someone to say, talk to about the council bill in the?
I think she would.
Okay. So she's going to, you're going to read the title?
Yes, I was going to read the title first.
Okay.
If you'll allow me to.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill 15 dash 1003. An ordinance calling a general obligation bond election to be held for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. A proposition for the issuance of negotiable general obligation bonds of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And in providing for the issuance of such bonds, the levy of a tax to pay such bonds.
Okay. So we had a motion by Ron and a second by Woody. Is that your second to approve Council Bill 15 dash 1003? Roll call, please.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to suspend the rules and adopt Council Bill 15 10 03 by having read its title only. One reading of the title only.
Second.
Dan made the motion, Woody seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Motion carried. We're now to our public comment. If anyone wishes to address the council, they would have three minutes to do so. Mr. Walker here tonight to address the council.
Audible council and Mr. Mayor, thanks for having me. My name is Dave Walker, 1055 Brooklyn. In less than two months, I can say I've lived here in this city for 60 years, which is shocking enough. And once upon a time, I sat right there and I was very proud to do so and salute you for everything that you do for our city as well. But looking in the past, I, I, I'm here to speak about something that I have no vested interest in. And actually, after a conversation a couple of weeks ago, I actually care less about. But it's something that I do care about, the city and the people that live here. And I think there's something we missed. As you look out that window, it's arguably the finest piece of property in the city of Coeur d'Alene. And even the people that railed against it have to look back and go, you know what? On an average summer day, there is more people that recreate on that property than in any day in my lifetime. So this is a real gem for us. But as I look back 13, 15 years ago, I was on a little committee that was called the Committee of Nine. This was where the seven values that originated from was that committee. We came up with a plan and it was presented to the city council and it was passed. And one of the things that we went from, from there was what do we do with the baseball field? I was also on an ad hoc committee that came up with a plan for a real baseball facility for the city. A stadium with real stands and real dugouts and real locker rooms and adequate parking in a great location, a secondary field, something that would allow tournaments and American Legion, things that we could have never done on a small field. And that was a key thing. And with those seven values, there was the, we need to replace with equal to or better than. Now, what I got into here at the Eagles about a week and a half ago is with a couple of baseball moms who still cling on to the fact that there should have been a baseball field out here, which I am 100% against and always was and still would be because there's no way you want to take this much property and commit a one use onto that much of a giant portion of this property. That said, we do have a replacement field. And it's not good enough. I went out there last week and it is a field that is tucked behind the Croc Center. In fact, if we look back in time, when we came up with this two-field, the stadium and the secondary field, the property that was identified and acquired by the City of Coeur d'Alene, Croc is there now. So that's what happened to that. I mean, we had planned, we were going towards that. Kind of went out the window, McEwen came along, we've got this. We've got a baseball field stuck in a corner. The parking is atrocious. It is tucked back away. Ingress and egress from, from the parking lot is horrible. Outside of maybe the fence lines, there is nothing about that property that is even equal to the McEwen property. Like I say, I couldn't care less. I've got a grandson whose dad is a soccer player and he's probably going to be a soccer player and I don't know if we'll ever be on a baseball field again. But this community deserves a real first-class baseball facility. And the people that railed against McEwen because of their fears of the baseball, I'm sorry, I ran out of my time, but give me the next 30 seconds here.
Go ahead.
The people that railed against McEwen because of their big fears of the baseball field, and you know what's come to pass is their fears were realized and that is, they didn't get the field, the first-class field that this city deserves. And I think we do. Baseball goes back 80 to 100 years in this community or maybe even more. It's something, you know, I coached on McEwen, I played on McEwen, so many of us did. And baseball, it's a big part of our community. But I think that, you know, we've kind of got the short shift for the baseball people to be stuck back there. I know we're looking at the four corners, there's a proposal, you know, something there with Memorial Field. I don't know if that can be, you know, we considered that one time. Would that be a baseball field? Can you imagine the Fourth of July? City, beach, the park, an all-American game across the street, a real baseball game on the Fourth of July? Whether it's that, there's been talk of something at Cherry Hill, who knows? But I think it's time to, to kind of look back and say, hey, you know what? McEwen is here, is fantastic, what we've done for the community, what you've done for the community, what the community's done for itself is absolutely fantastic outside of the white calipers, which nobody cares for. But, but to complete that, I think the final part is we need to provide that baseball field, a baseball facility for the City of Coeur d'Alene that, that we deserve, that this city deserves and our players deserve. So I'm just kind of throwing this back out and not, not asking for any action on this, but it is something that I just felt compelled to come tonight and go, let's not forget a promise that, that I made sitting up there, previous councils have made, and things that the City of Coeur d'Alene promised to the city. And I think that's one thing that we, we need to kind of follow through on.
Yeah. Appreciate your comments, Dave. I think that there's some folks sitting up here that probably wholeheartedly agree with you.
Dave, if I could, so explain to me, so the first-class baseball field is about location. It's not how it's built, it's not dugouts, it's about locker rooms and parking and concessions and, right? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
First-class baseball facility is not location. I mean, a location, a baseball, you're playing, are you playing baseball or are you looking at the lake? That's why I was always like, I never could see the field down here. American Legion could never host a regional tournament. I mean, hey, how many other things do we do here in this community? Do we invite regional for all sorts of things? We put up a snow fence, you can't sell tickets for it. It was just, it was just a wrong place for that. The Croc property would have been great because, you know, it's right on our arterial Ramsey, I-90. If Cherry Hill, it turns out to be Cherry Hill, I-90, 15, it's on arterials. It's a great location for that. But the baseball facility itself, a real stadium, you know, something, I mean, our vision was on this little committee that we had 13, 14 years ago, this little ad hoc baseball committee, and, and some great people were on that. And the, the first time they laid the plan out, I was just like, boom, this is great. This was a secondary field and a, and a real field, a real stadium. I mean, this is, you know, build it and they will come. But you know, right now, you go out there and, and the stands, they're crummy aluminum bleachers, the, the dugouts are basically like they were here, but there's, and like I say, maybe the fence line is better, it's a better fence line. It's not tucked up against Tubbs Hill. But that location, go out there someday and park because just trying to get into that little parking area, it's a small parking lot. Getting in, getting out is difficult and then you've got to walk all the way around to get to it. And you'll see the people are going there. In fact, actually, the crews, the city crews that were park commission people that were there, were actually parked over on the golf course side, on the back street, and they were walking in to do their work on the field. So it's a crummy location, it's inadequate, inadequate stands, inadequate parking, inadequate everything, and it just is not the gem of a baseball field that I dreamed, that other people dreamed, the city dreamed and the baseball people dream of too. I'd say, we don't need a view of the lake, but a real baseball facility that we can take pride in as we take pride in this building, we take pride in this property, our fire department, our police department, we're a first-class city. And that's one thing that makes a first-class city, is a facility like that.
Appreciate it, Dave. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dave.
Hate to talk and run? There's a green beer with my name on it.
Okay. Thank you. Want to step up for public comment, please?
Roy Morguey from 2022 East Coeur d'Alene Avenue. I'm still concerned about all the stop sign failure out there and on 21st Street, plus sometimes they're using Coeur d'Alene Avenue for racetrack. And I've had a lot of promises, there's nothing going on yet. I'd like to see something done about that. And tonight, I noticed that again, the people coming to pick up their children from school, now they're, they're going three wide up that street again, blocking all the traffic. And that's, that's not right.
You know, we have, we have, I know Police Chief White has had some studies done there and he is working on that. So we have addressed that issue there and we're taking a, a long look at that. You know, we, we take traffic near schools especially, we take all traffic seriously, but especially in school zones, we take that very seriously. I know Chief White has been working on that. So maybe if you want, you could have a conversation with Chief White and he can kind of bring you up to speed on some things that they've done there.
Well, I thank you because I, I watch it right through my window every day and so it concerns me.
Yeah.
And I don't, if we wait until there's a accident or injury, we've waited too long.
Yeah. All right, appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing for a public comment?
My name's Brian Donnell, 414 East Ichabod. Pretty much the same thing. I've been up here several times over this, over the last probably 10 years, complaining about the way the traffic is set up over in our neighborhood. Complained quite a while, finally there was an accident, but the stop sign was put in the wrong direction. Everybody does not want to use or wait for the light at Lunsford. So they use our street as a cut-through to cut through as far as, not only from 4th to 5th and get over to Lunsford, but to cut all the way over to 15th and cut up and go north or go south. We've repeatedly have neighbors that have physically stopped cars that are screaming down our streets with our kids out in the streets. You know, it's been a big issue. We've asked and asked and asked for stop signs on Ichabod going east and west. And right, I mean, we started asking that right after the stop signs north and south got put on, on 5th Street. You know, the weather's gotten better for a few days and the traffic picked up. And we consistently get people that are flying through there. Some of them are neighbors, they have been talked to. Some of them, we've chased as far as 22nd Street. So.
Who have you talked to at the city in regards to?
I've been at the city council off and on over the last 10 years. I talked with the last police chief.
But not in, because I can't remember, so not in the last year or so?
No.
Yeah, okay. And, and you were at 414 Ichabod?
Yep. So I'm pretty much dead center between 4th and 5th Street on Ichabod.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind leaving your name and a contact with, with Jim Hammond and we'll take a look at that and-
Okay.
-see what we can do with that.